Good evening. This is the caucus meeting for March 10, 2025. Presiding Officer of the Council, sorry. Presiding Officer of the Council, my lady Tejeda wishes to advise the audience that notice of this meeting has been filed with the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and posted on the bulletin board in the city clerk's office and on the city's website, indicating that today's meeting is being held in the Council Chamber, City Hall, 260 High Street at 5:30 PM, and right now is 5:35. And the council meeting will follow the caucus and the closed session. Council President Tejeda, as a courtesy of the governing body, I will ask all individuals present, including members of the audience, to please turn off all cell phones, including members, I'm sorry, cell phones and electronic devices. Should you need to make a telephone call, please go out into the hallway and speak in a low voice so as not to disturb the ongoing meeting. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Present.
Councilwoman Morales?
Present.
Councilwoman Peralta?
She's on her job, they have something, so she's out.
Councilman Puccio?
Present.
Council President Tejeda?
Present. Ordinance, public hearing, five minutes maximum per speakers per ordinance. An ordinance of the City of Perthamboy, County of Middlesex amending and supplementing Chapter IV Administration of Government, Article 12, Department of Human Services, Ordinance Number 1522-2010, as amended August 11, 2010, of the Code of the City of Perthamboy to update fees and provide additional regulations related to criminal history background checks. Number two, an ordinance of the City of Perthamboy, County of Middlesex, New Jersey, to amend an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance Designating Restricted Parking Spaces for Use by Handicapped Persons," Ordinance Number 380-85, and amendments adopted July 2, 1985, also known as a Chapter 255 of the Code of the City of Perthamboy, and this is about deletions. Number three, an ordinance to amend an ordinance entitled "Ordinance Fixing and Establishing a Schedule of Salaries and Salary Ranges and Increments for Perthamboy Fire Officers Association F M B A," Local 258, Ordinance Number 218-79, as amended, adopted July 3, 1979. Number four, an ordinance of the City of Perthamboy, County of Middlesex, New Jersey, authorizing the sale of the property located at Block 93, Lot 1 that 03, and Block 95, Lots 1 through 16, commonly known as 599 Fayette Street, to Clermont Property Acquisitions LLC, for the purchase price of $13,938,750, and additional actions to effectuate same pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law, NJSA 4812A-1. Number five, an ordinance authorizing an amendment to the contract for sale of surplus real property located at 400 Laurie Street, Perthamboy, New Jersey, to Perthamboy Redevelopment Team for Neighborhood Enterprise and Revitalization Partner for $40,000. Number six, ordinance of the Council of the City of Perthamboy, County of Middlesex, New Jersey, authorizing an ordinance entitled "Mercantile Establishment and Business Registration." Agenda, public comments, citizen may address the council on any matter of the agenda which does not have its own scheduled public hearing. Citizens shall be permitted to speak once for a maximum of five minutes. Supplemental debt statement, general improvement, refunding bonds, $18 million. Bits were received on February 21, 2025, for the following: Purchase of 2024 Chevrolet Tahoe SSV for the Fire Department. Whitmoyer Chevrolet Inc., DBA Kinley Chevrolet, $54,763, Fellegrino Group, $56,900, G N H Auto Group Inc., $58,095. Bits were received on February 28, 2025, for the following: Fire Department Parking Lot Improvement Rebid, Protecting Paving LLC, $201,402, Fisher Contracting Inc., $222,904, Kyle Conti Construction LLC, $229,922, Chia One Builders, $236,162 with 20 cents. Reports, Jill A. Goldie, CFO Controller, submitted the following: 2024 Annual Debt Statement, Annual Financial Statement for the Year 2024, An Order Investment Report for the Month of January 2025. Ordinance, first reading, no public discussion. Number one, an ordinance of the City of Perthamboy, County of Middlesex, New Jersey, to amend an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance Designating Restricted Parking Spaces for Use by Handicapped Persons," Ordinance Number 380-85, and amendments adopted July 2, 1985, also known as Chapter 255 of the Code of the City of Perthamboy, and this is about deletions. Number two, an ordinance to amend an ordinance creating a special improvement district within the City of Perthamboy and designating a district management corporation, Ordinance Number 776-95, as amended, adopted July 17, 1995, also known as Chapter 381 of the Code of the City of Perthamboy. Number three, refunding bond ordinance of the City of Perthamboy in the County of Middlesex, New Jersey, providing for the refunding of all or a portion of certain general improvement refunding bonds, Series 2015 of the city, appropriating $18 million, therefore enauthorizing the issuance by the city of one or more series of refunding bonds in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $18 million for financing the cost thereof. Resolution, R. 12325, authorizing emergency temporary appropriation to extend the calendar year 2025 temporary budget in the amount of $14,767,910. R. 121325, authorizing an electronic tax sale fee schedule. R. 1223, that's a title 25, authorizing use of electronic tax sale. R. 123325, authorizing refund of code compliance fee for a property located at 688 State Street in the amount of $120 to Bandi Property Management. R. 124325, authorizing a refund in the amount of $125 to Brian Caveille, a tenant, for the return of the key deposit for three keys with the Perthamboy Harbor Side Marina. R. 125325, authorizing the submission of a grant application to the New Jersey State Library for digitalization of historic documents in the celebration of semi-quintennial. Did you say we were going to have some presentation on that? Or?
No, ma'am. That would be for the next one, with regards to R. 126. It's a grant application for renovations to the library. If there are questions concerning it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I knew you mentioned the library. Okay.
So that would be the next one. It's just, once again, we're going out for a grant award to try and see if we can recover some, or receive some funding for renovations to the library with regards to the next resolution. And I believe Joel.
He's right here.
Yeah. Right on time. But he presented last time regarding.
Okay, yes.
If there were additional questions.
Okay. So, R. 126325, awarding a contract to Dennis Coe, Architects, for schematic design, cost estimate preparation, and consultation for the grant application to the New Jersey Historic Fund for renovations to the free public library second level in an amount not to exceed $82,500. Are you guys interested in seeing a presentation? This is only for the application, like Mr. Green said, but if you would like, the architect is here, and Joel is here. I know Joel presented last time, but will you be interested in them presenting what the project?
Tonight or next?
Tonight. Tonight, they're here.
I'm good.
You're good? Everybody's good?
Yeah, because you presented the last time.
Okay. Thank you. R. 127325, accepting the bid of Whitmoyer Chevrolet Inc., DBA Kinley Chevrolet, for the purchase of 2024 Chevrolet Tahoe SSV for the Perthamboy Fire Department in the amount not to exceed $54,763.
Just have a question for, nothing changed from the previous presentation, correct?
No.
Okay. So I'm good. Thank you.
R. 128325, authorizing the proper city officials to apply for the provision of estate, community, and family court appropriation programs to youth residing in Middlesex County Grant Station House Adjustment Counseling Community Engagement Program to provide services and innovative approaches for our risk youth. Proposal CC 25906, in the amount of $59,400. R. 129325, authorizing the contract with Paramus Ford Inc. for the purchase of 2025 Ford F550 Super Duty Draw Up 4x4 Supercab with, oh my goodness, Naffy Body Model 6108 and utility body through Bergen County Co-op B C dash 24 dash 06, Co-op number CK 04, in the amount not to exceed $104,780 with 20 cents. I think you had some questions about that.
Yeah. The police chief here?
I will text him. He may, as you know, he's normally here. But one thing I did send the council members, is this vehicle is to replace a 2006 traffic maintenance vehicle. Pictures are attached of the old and a proposed new vehicle. The new vehicle also have a small crane on it to remove and install signposts. But I will definitely try and text him as well. But that's what I text everyone, and the pictures.
Okay. R. 130325, authorizing the City of Perthamboy, County of Middlesex, New Jersey, to submit an application to the Division of Food and Nutrition for the New Jersey Department of Agriculture for the 2025 Summer Food Service Program.
Council President, the chief is.
Chief.
Don't sit there.
Good evening.
Okay. Rose?
Oh, hi. Good evening, chief. I just wanted to know, I know Mr. Green had just explained that this is replacing a vehicle. Is that specifically what it's going to be replacing, the 2006 traffic maintenance vehicle?
Yes, I sent the photographs and everything else on through.
Okay.
They were sent through an email package, actually, too.
Yeah, I wasn't able to.
We were having problems with the emails.
Receiving emails, unfortunately.
I sent it via text, like you sent it to me, and I sent it to you.
Yes, and it's part of the backup in the agenda package.
Okay. Because I was under the impression that that traffic maintenance truck, they just replaced that, the engine on that recently, the past several years. So it's really, it needs to be.
It's less reliable than it was, and this has been in the capital purchase program for probably at least the last three or four years.
That's it?
Yep, thank you.
I just, one question now.
Get close to the mic, please.
Now, this new vehicle, what's going to happen to the old one?
The old one will be placed in backup, and then when it completely fails, we won't spend any more money on it and so forth. Because we've had a larger traffic maintenance crew than we've had in the past, so we've had to take other vans. They were using one of the older police vans and so forth, because we didn't have enough vehicles.
All right. I have some other questions about other police stuff, but we'll wait till, about police memorial, but later on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. 131325, accepting the bid and authorizing a contract with Protective Paving LLC for the Fire Department Parking Lot Improvement Project Rebid in the amount not to exceed R. 132325, authorizing submission of an application to the Middlesex County 2025 Recycling Enhancement Grant Program in the amount of $10,000. R. 133325, authorizing submission of an application to the New Jersey Department of Transportation Local Transport Projects Fund 2025 in the amount of $1,737,454.50. R. 134325, authorizing the refund of a hydrant meter rental deposit in the amount of $1,991 with 58 cents to Judge Harms Construction Inc. Go ahead.
I have a question about one of the correspondents.
Okay.
On the next page.
Okay, so now we have the communication.
The communication.
You have a question about which one?
Number four.
Langen Engineering and Environmental Services submitted a copy of the NJDEP deed, Norris Biannual Certification Report for the former Duane Marine site, 26 Washington Street.
Okay, I guess that was just a misspelling, biannual. My question is, now I know where 26 Washington Street is, and I know where Duane Marine was.
You know more than me.
Okay? My question is, we don't own 26 Washington Street anymore. That belongs to the county. Belongs to the county.
The director of O E C.
It's the park.
Yeah.
So, I mean, is there a lot that we own?
No, so we don't own anything on that property. They have to submit their, because it was through a redevelopment agreement, and it were redevelopment project at the time, they, all of their environmental reports still come to us. They're just addressed for information purposes only.
Aside from some of us old timers that are here, wouldn't know that Duane Marine was a superfund site.
Yes. So, and they're still actually active in our BBA or Brownfields Development Association. So until the project is, after a certain amount of years, the project will finally wrap, but they're still involved, DEP's still involved, and we receive all communications in regards to any remediation or reports that they submit.
Yeah, because at the dead end of Washington Street, so to the left is the baseball field now, and Peterson Park, and to the right would be Kushner's property. Yeah, you're at the dead end, looking at Staten Island.
Yes, so after the block of Rector where Meta Paro currently is, it's the following block is the Kushner properties. Yes, sir. But this is specific to the park property.
Right, which probably would be toward the dead end.
Near the, your entire site, so it's really where the, from the start of the park to where the parking lot ends.
Oh, okay. All right. I just wanted to know. So it's something that they do twice a year?
Yes.
I'm good. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Director Vasquez.
All right. Closed session resolution, R. 119325, authorizing a closed session at the March 10, 2025 City Council Meeting to discuss the following potential litigation. Anything else? That's it?
I think it was the boards. You wanted to discuss the boards.
Also, just wanted to discuss filling the vacancies for the boards.
Okay.
Please.
Okay, I need a motion?
Move.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Public portion, five minutes maximum per speaker. I need a motion to open to the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Anyone? Oh, I feel hurt.
I'm looking at that thing here, resolution here, the one about the library, the archetype, $82,000, whatever. The thing is, it's okay, you're working on a library. That's a positive thing. It was fixed before when Woolly Bear, now you fix it again, that's good. There's something going on here. That's, the library is working its way up. I don't know if it's under preservation or whatever, that'd be discussed later sometime, but this is a good sign that you're doing something positive here.
Thank you.
You know, your tax dollars are at work. Finally, something's good. So I have to say, yeah, that's a step forward. So that's good. That's, so that's about it. One thing I want to ask, though, what's with this price agreement? I don't, when you buy vehicles, how does that work, a price agreement? It's like a contract or something? You have to go buy?
Mr. Green? Or whoever?
It's by state contract, right?
By state contract.
State contract. Like you said, it's a state. The state, it's a purchasing cooperative, and the state, that entity, basically, they solicit bids for different vehicles, so the city's part of that cooperative. It's already, all of the bids that they solicit are already checked, and essentially, the city gets to pick from the contract that they can, they can purchase vehicles. There's other different types of public property that can be purchased through the state cooperatives.
And the vendors are thoroughly vetted as well.
Yeah, the state cooperative, they take care of the, I guess, the local public contract law.
Yes.
Requirements to ensure that all of the vendors are properly checked out, and the bids are viable for the city to take on.
When you purchase something, you put a bid in, okay? And then that's, this is what the bid's going to be, and you can't go no more than that.
Yeah, well, the city.
I heard when you said that, Donna, we're never going more than that.
Yeah, well, part of being in this cooperative, the city didn't solicit these bids. The state cooperative solicits the bids, the city's a member of that. So those are already taken care of, and the city gets to pick from that list, approved list of how they want to award.
Okay, let's go.
Anybody else?
Vince Macill, good evening, council. I, again, I'm addressing, as a member of the branch board, I'm addressing, you'll have it on the communication tonight. We obviously go through some transition in any organization or a board. I hope that the new members, Mr. Tefor and other members possibly, can continue to make the board a strong part of the boards in Perthamboy. As a board member for just about four years, I think one of our responsibilities is make the republic, the public, know that they have options in terms of filing complaints with the board, as well as landlords filing decontrol or having options in terms of capital improvements as well as hardships. Those are all part of why the board exists. I think presently, as I distributed it to you on multiple meetings, I think that overwhelmingly, we were getting too many decontrol applications or board, the reason why the board exists is to prevent exorbitant prices, and that's the original purpose back in the 1980s. And right now, the board is needed more than ever. So as, tonight, as I distributed before, and I'd like to make the residents of Perthamboy know that they have an option if their landlord is not abiding by the present rules in the city of Perthamboy, that they have an option to file complaints at Olive Street, take the time, take the effort, don't be, I know that doing such things involves a certain amount of courage and a certain amount of self-respect to do such a thing. Again, I'm just doing this for a demonstration, but here are complaints based on the Board Rules 353-6. We are supposed to do outreach and assist tenants and landlords with abiding, with the compliance of the rent laws, which is 353-6. That's why I'm doing this tonight, and I appreciate any tenants that are seeing this, that they have these options within Perthamboy, New Jersey, to file this, as well as landlords that have capital improvement and hardship compliance applications if they need to do that. Thank you, council members.
Thank you. I think that's a very good information for our residents, and I hope that they take advantage of the opportunity that they have. Anybody else? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public portion.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? We're going, I need a motion to go to closed session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Okay, we will be going to closed session. After we come back, we will close this meeting and start the council meeting. Thank you.
Matthew.
Ready?
Ready.
We're back from closed session. I need a motion to return.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? I need a motion to adjourn the caucus.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Okay, we're ready for council meeting. Okay. Good evening. This is the council meeting for March 10, 2025. Presiding Officer of the Council, my lady Tejeda, wishes to advise the audience that notice of this meeting has been filed with the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and posted in the bulletin board and the city clerk's office and on the city's website, indicating that today's meeting is being held in the Council Chamber, City Hall, 260 High Street, right after the caucus and closed session. Right now is 6:30. Council President Tejeda, as a courtesy of the governing body, I will ask all individuals present, including members of the audience, to please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices. Should you need to make a telephone call, please go out into the hallway and speak in a low voice so as not to disturb the ongoing meeting. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Present.
Councilwoman Morales?
Present.
Councilman Puccio?
Present.
Council President Tejeda?
Present. Stacy Peralta is absent. Okay, let's stand for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Please, Lord, watch over this governing body. Please provide us with wisdom and understanding of the needs of our residents and our city and our administration. Also, I want to pray for our children, for the young kids, for our families who reside in this town, in this city, and for the officers that protect our safety, the fire department, the safety of all. and for the officers that protect our safety, the fire department, the safety of all our residents, also for those who are abroad defending our freedom and protecting our nation. Also, we pray for their families, and with that, I say, amen. Pray allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the physical, with liberty and justice for all. Ordinance, public hearing, five minutes maximum per speakers per ordinance. Number one, an ordinance of the city of Perth Amboy County of Meadowsex amending and supplementing char- chapter four, Administration of Government, Article twelve, Department of Human Services, ordinance number fifteen twenty-two dash twenty-ten, as amended August eleven twenty-ten of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy to update fees and provide additional regulation related to criminal history background checks. I need a motion to open-
Move.
-to the public.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, against? Okay, it's open to the public, whoever wants to speak on this ordinance. Seeing none, I need a motion to close public hearing.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I need, against? I need a motion to adopt.
Move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Number two, an ordinance of the city of Perth Amboy County of Meadowsex, New Jersey, to amend an ordinance entitled, an ordinance designating restricted parking spaces for the use by handicapped persons, ordinance number three eighty dash eighty-five, an amendment adopted July second nineteen eighty-five, also known as a chapter two fifty-five A, seek of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy, and this is about deletion. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, against? It's open to the public, whoever wants to speak on this. I see nobody. I need a motion to close public hearing.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? I need a motion to adopt.
Move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Number three, an ordinance to amend an ordinance entitled, ordinance fixing and establishing a schedule of salaries and salary ranges and increments for the Perth Amboy Fire Officers Association, F M B A, Local two fifty-eight, ordinance number two eighteen dash seventy-nine, as amended, adopted July third nineteen seventy-nine. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, against? Seeing no one, I need a motion to close-
Move.
-public portion.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, against? I need a motion to adopt.
Move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Number four, an ordinance of the city of Perth Amboy County of Meadowsex, New Jersey, authorizing the sale of the property located at block ninety-three, lot one dot zero three, and block ninety-five, lots one through sixteen, commonly known as five ninety-nine for Yet Street, to Claire Mount Property Acquisition LLC for the purchase price of thirteen million nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, and addition, and additional actions to effectuate same pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law, N J S A forty-eight, column twelve, A dash one. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, against? It's open to the public. Seeing none, I need a motion to close public hearing.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, against? I need a motion to adopt.
Move.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Number five, an ordinance authorizing an amendment to the contract for sale of surplus real property located at four hundred Laurie Street, Perth Amboy, New Jersey, to Perth Amboy Redevelopment Team for Neighborhood Enterprise and Revitalization Partner for forty thousand dollars. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Seeing none, I need a motion to close public hearing.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, against? I need a motion to adopt.
Move.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Number six, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Perth Amboy County of Meadowsex, New Jersey, authorizing an ordinance entitled, mercan- merchant tile establishment and business registration. I need a motion to open to the public.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, against? It's open to the public. Seeing none, I need a motion to close public hearing.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, against? I need a motion to adopt.
Move.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Agenda, public comments, citizen may address the council on any matter on the agenda which does not have its own scheduled public hearing. Citizen shall be permitted to speak once for a maximum of five minutes. I need a motion to open to the public on agenda item only.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, against? Anything? Seeing none, I need a motion to public, uh, to close public comments on agenda item.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, against? Okay, supplemental debt statement, general improvement refunding bonds, eighteen million dollars. Bits, bits were received on February twenty-first, twenty twenty-five to, for the following, purchase of a twenty twenty-four Che- Chevrolet Tahoe S S V for the fire department. With Moyer Chevrolet Inc., D B A Kenley Chevrolet is, which was, the bid was awarded, is fifty-four thousand seven hundred and sixty-three dollars, Legrino Group, fifty-six thousand nine hundred dollars, G and H Auto Group Inc., fifty-eight thousand ninety-five dollars. Bits were received on February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five for the following, fire department parking lot improvement rebid. Protective pave, paving LLC, two hundred and one thousand four hundred and two dollars, which was the awarded, uh, the bid that was awarded. Fisher Contracting Inc., two hundred and twenty-two thousand nine hundred and four dollars. Kyle Conti Construction LLC, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars. G X One Builders, two hundred and thirty-six thousand one hundred and sixty-two thousand, um, one hundred and sixty-two dollars with twenty cents. Reports, G L A Goldie CFO Controller submitted the following, two hundred and twenty-four annual debt statement, uh, also the annual financial statement for the year of twenty twenty-four on a, on order it, investment report for the month of January twenty twenty-five. Ordinance, first reading, no public discussion. And no, number one, an ordinance of city of Perth Amboy County of Meadowsex, New Jersey, to amend an ordinance entitled, an ordinance designating restricted parking spaces for the use by handicapped person, ordinance number three eighty dash eighty-five, an amendment adopted July second nineteen eighty-five, also known as chapter two fifty-five A, seek of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy, I need a motion.
Move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Number two, an ordinance to amend an ordinance creating a special improvement district within the city of Perth Amboy and designating a district management corporation, ordinance number seven hundred and seventy-six dash ninety-five, as amended, adopted July nineteen, uh, July seventeen nineteen ninety-five, also known as chapter three eighty-one, seek of the Code of the City of Perth Amboy. I need a motion.
Move.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Uh, number three, refunding bond ordinance of the city of Perth Amboy and the county of Meadowsex, New Jersey, providing for the refunding of, of all or a portion of certain general improvement refunding bonds, series, series twenty fifteen for, of the city appropriating eighteen million, therefore, and authorizing the issuance by the city of one or more series of refunding bonds in the aggregate principal amount of not exceeding eighteen million dollars for financing the cost thereof. Need a motion?
Move.
Second.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. Now look over the resolutions. Anything that you want to pull? One twenty-nine. Anything else? Anybody else?
No.
Okay, so the consent agenda, I need a motion for the consent agenda. R one twenty-three twenty-five through, R one twenty-eight three twenty-five, R one thirty-three twenty-five through one, R one thirty-four three twenty-five, I need a motion.
Move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morales?
Yes.
Councilman Puccio?
Yes.
Council President Tejeda?
Yes. R one twenty-nine three twenty-five, authorizing a contract with Paramus Board Inc. for the purchase of a twenty twenty-five Ford F five fifty super duty draw four by four super cab and with, I can't pronounce that. Now, what is it? Napa, body model six one oh eight and utility body through Bergen County Co-op B C dash twenty-four dash zero six, slash Co-op number C K zero four, and the amount not to exceed a hundred and four thousand seven hundred and eighty with twenty cents. I need a motion.
Move.
Second. Councilwoman Cruz?
At this specific moment, no.
Councilwoman Morales?
No.
I didn't hear, I didn't hear what Haley said.
No, she said no. Uh, Councilman Puccio?
You know, in principle, I, I agree with my colleagues, I do. But, you know, knowing how this works, and at this stage of the game, uh, I have to ask Mr. Green a question. How long ago did, was the bid for this?
The bid is in here and, uh-
Well, that was for the fire department.
Oh, yes. That's the fire.
I would have to check, because it definitely came from the co-op, so, um, I don't know if the bid-
Now, the chief said, the chief said that this, this particular item has been, he's been asking for this item for the last three years, is that true?
Three or four years.
Three or four years.
It was on the-
I mean, that's what he said, I'm only going by what he said.
It was definitely on his capital plan, that's why it's here. Um, how long he's been asking for it, I can't really speak to that, but it's definitely on the capital plan.
All right, so what happens if it doesn't pass?
As you know, we wouldn't procure it at this time, can he put it up again later, he could. Um, of the vehicle, I think, I forgot the year he said it was.
He said two thousand six.
Two thousand six, so he would use the old vehicle until something-
No.
Until the vehicle comes. Okay, got you. Okay.
Council President Tejeda?
Okay, uh, I do have to agree with my colleagues. Um, it is a large amount of money, and I know that it was on the capital, but, um, we need to just keep it low, say no. Okay, so, with that, the communications, and- Public portion, five minutes maximum per speaker, I need a motion to open to the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Okay, I need, I see no one, I need a motion to close public portion.
What, what, Mr. Perez, you're gonna get up?
I didn't see you getting up.
I don't know, it's not here.
So you could be Mr. Ballot.
Uh, well, in a first, first day in way, real quick and then simple, I got friends in Wall Street. I'll give you heads up on this. Take this very seriously, and read the Wall Street Journal. As you know, you got January, February, March, and then April come, April's like what they call the first quarter, all your markets and all. Keep an eye this year on, in April, the stock market, all this money thing that's going around. There'll be a lot of weird things, you're like, what is this going on here? This is going up, you mentioned tax increase, all this stuff. Mr. Puccio, you told, thank you, you told the truth. I applaud you for that, you told the truth, you're honest. You gotta be honest with this, I'm, I'm not playing games here. Keep your eye on a mu- a month, the month of April is gonna be very shaky, I've really seen a lot of stuff. I do for fun, I'm retired, and I read the Wall Street, all this stuff, and I'm seeing it, doesn't look good with the tariffs and all that stuff, I don't want to hear the Trump thing, but it's gonna affect the city in some way. It's gonna affect your people. Really. You guys are gonna feel the squeeze this year, a lot of stuff. Where are we gonna get the money from? I got a friend of mine in, uh, Ashland, Pennsylvania, town so broke, they don't know what to do now. Look up Ash Town, Pennsylvania, look up Jamestown, Pennsylvania, look where they're going through right now. They can't do nothing, they're stuck. People losing a home, there's a history left, there's a history behind that. And I don't want to see it happen here, but I'm telling you right now, as a person, as a concerned citizen, you count your, you're smart people, you know where I'm coming with this. April is gonna be the panic month. People are gonna start like, they're gonna see it, it's coming. You know, I, I, just by the looks, they're like, oh, please don't do this, I'm just giving you heads up. So, you know, when it comes, you know, don't look at me with a dirty look. No, it's, I've been an Ask, I'm just telling you what it is. Because, you know, being outside of the table, it's rough, it's rough. Nobody in that side of the table wants to talk about this. They don't, they don't want to bring things up, it's scary. It is, I met former council members in other community, they said, man, you know, I, I, these guys went home, they, they put the lights on, they stuck a light on, I'm gonna tell this to the people, what I'm gonna do. This is rough what you got behind there. It's not a game, it's serious. You know, I understand, you know, you're proud of yourself being there, but you take a risk. You're taking a big risk sometimes. So, I'm just living with you, that's all, I appreciate your concern and, and listening to me, but let's see what happens, all right? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Seeing none, I need a motion to close- Close public portion.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, against? Okay, council comments, um, Councilwoman Cruz?
Good evening, and thank you all for being here on this beautiful day. Um, happy Women's History Month, I love all the photos that the city of Perth Amboy has, and, and I know that the library has upcoming events for Women's History Month, for MS as well, I did see Herschel's email, and, um, for Saint Patrick's Day as well that's coming up, I know that the city does have the flag raising. So, just keep in contact with the city of Perth Amboy, Facebook page, website, for upcoming events, and that's pretty much it. Have a great night, everyone.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Morales?
Um, I'm gonna keep it nice and short and sweet, um, beautiful weather we are finally having, I hope everyone is enjoying it, I think the rest of the week is supposed to be really nice, and, um, just wishing everybody who celebrates Saint Patrick's Day to enjoy, um, the holiday, and, um, yeah, I agree with Council Cruz, Councilwoman Cruz, that, you know, we do have other events going on, and just keep up with that, and, and join. And that's pretty much it, have a good evening.
Thank you. Councilman Puccio?
I'm just saying, I hope everybody has a good night, uh, and it was a pleasure being with everybody today, and a special shout out to the Assistant City Clerk, Teresa.
with everybody today, and a special shout out to the Assistant City Clerk, Teresa. I'm good.
Thank you.
I'm good.
Thank you. Okay, I also want to say, thank you for participating, uh, your opinion is very well taken, um, and I, I just want to wish, um, happy St. Patrick's Day for those who celebrate, and I think one day we can all be Irish. Also, I just wanted to congratulate all the women that, um, that live in this city and anywhere else, that had made a difference in the world because of what they do, so I want to celebrate them and say thank you, and we'll continue, we'll continue the women moving up. So, thank you for tonight, for being here, and thank you, Teresa, every time you're here, it's a short meeting, thank you, and, um... With that, I say, good night, I need a motion to close, um, the meeting?
Move.
Adjourn the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, against?